May I briefly return to the question that was posed earlier on about Section 65 Subsection 9?
Yes.
Tab 19 of the Authority's bundle, page 58. There are perhaps two things to submit in relation to Section 9a. The second respondent has the power to approve or to reject a plan submitted to it. Given that it's common ground that this power exists at any time prior to adoption, that power to reject a plan must include a power to reject a plan as proposed to be modified in the light of an inspector's recommendations. So the second respondent has express power to disagree and depart from the recommendations of an inspector. That provision, a provision like that, is not present in the provisions that apply to local planning processes. Secondly, and connected to that, there is no reason in my submission why legislation should not give central government more extensive powers than a local authority, and that would be an example of that sort of situation. So I'm sorry with that digression, my lords, but...
No, no, that's all right. Thank you.
My lord, I want to just, finally, on the statutory provisions, just draw attention to one other matter, because there is a curiosity about Regulation 26 that I ought to draw to the course of attention lest it's thought I'm inadvertently misleading your lordships. If I could invite your lordships to turn, please, into the Authority's bundle, tab 32, where Regulation 26 appears.
Yes.
Maloney Friend in his skeleton and in his oral submissions dealt with the consequences of withdrawal of a local development plan in terms of removal of documents and so on. There is the curious aspect of this regulation in that in its opening line, it is said to apply only to withdraw under Section 66, not Section 66a. Whether that's deliberate or an oversight, I certainly can't assist the court with that. It's not an overhang from an old version of the regulations, because this regulation has been amended since 2005, as your lordships can see from the entry at the beginning of the printout.
Yes, so it wouldn't apply to any other...
On the face of it, it's not a mandatory requirement. So on the face of it, the provisions to withdraw documents only apply where the second respondent mandates withdrawal, not where the local planning authority chooses to withdraw and the second respondent doesn't step in. For my part, I can't think of an explanation as to why that would be the case, but there we are, that's what it says.
A mistake. Maybe.
So, my lord, insofar as your lordship's task revolves around thinking about the consequences of withdrawal, I thought I ought to draw that anomaly to your lordship's attention. My lord, turning then to the legal principles, there's no dispute between, certainly, me and Maloney Friend, as to the ways to interpret legislation. I would simply draw particular attention to the fact that it is accepted by the appellant in paragraph 32 of their skeleton, that in appropriate cases, the word "may" can impose a duty to act. We see that in Benyon, Maloney Friend took your lordships to that in his submissions, and I don't need to repeat that. Other than that, there is no matter of the legal background on interpreting statutes that I feel there's any need to draw attention to. The principles are agreed. In my submission, when one draws all the threads together of the statutory framework in this case and applying those principles to statutory interpretation, the appropriate conclusion would be, in this case, that Section 67 does impose a duty to adopt, and Mr Justice Eyre was right to hold as he did, for three main reasons. Firstly, the structure of the Act is to drive the preparation, examination and adoption of local development plans, as well as national component and the strategic component, in order to make sure planning policy is brought and kept up to date, and that it works effectively together. Giving the local planning authority the discretion whether to adopt after a plan has been through the examination process and an inspector has said that the plan is either sound as it is or can be made sound with modifications, which, in other words, other words of putting that in my submission, my lord, are that it would be appropriate in the public interest for that plan to be adopted in the form it is or as recommended. To confer a discretion on the authority to abandon effectively the plan at that late stage would be inimical to the purpose of driving towards up-to-date plans that are kept up to date and work in lockstep with each other. And it runs the risk of leaving the local component of the development plan absent from the development plan. Certainly, it would stand presently standing Wales. If there was no local development plan component, one would only be left with very high-level national strategic policies in the development plan, which would not provide a robust basis for decision-making in the local context.
Why would there be no plan?
There would be no local component of the development plan. Because the authority have decided not to adopt, the local development plan in its draft form would stay where it was, subject to the powers of intervention, which I'll come to in a moment, and for whatever time period resulted from that decision, the only components of the development plan would now be the national one, in the future, the national one plus any strategic development plans that are put forward, which, because they wouldn't condescend to local detail, wouldn't provide a detailed planning framework for Wexham or any other local planning authority in Wales.
You say subject to the intervention.
Yes.
But they're designed, aren't they, to meet that risk of a lacuna?
In my submission, not, my lord, and I was going to deal with those as part of the limbo argument, which is one of my three-point topics.
In your own time.
Thank you very much. And, my lord, the second indication as to why there is a duty in Section 67 is the point I've already made, the absence of provision in Section 65 as to the process for intervention after the examiner reports, but before adoption is decided upon. But in my submission, the most powerful indication of the duty to adopt is the interplay between the adoption provisions and the restrictions on withdrawal, because by allowing the local planning authority to decline to adopt at the very end of what is, on any view, a time-consuming and expensive process, would allow, in practical terms, these restrictions on withdrawal to be rendered of no practical effect. Whether one calls it withdrawal, abandonment or non-adoption, the end result would be the same. There would not be a local development plan component of the development plan if the authority was entitled to not adopt, and then the position reaches limbo, which I'll come to as my next point. Because in my submission, the consequences of non-adoption would be worse than withdrawal, because if, subject to the anomaly about Regulation 26a, if withdrawal certainly takes place under Section 66, that does kill the draft plan off, because it requires removal of documents from public view. But a draft plan which was not withdrawn and not adopted would be a significant complicating factor in decision-making. I ask your lordships to put yourselves in the shoes of the local planning authority or a developer who had made a planning application under such circumstances. We would have a situation where there was a draft plan which a planning inspector had determined was fit for purpose as it is or with modifications, which means, in my submission, in the public interest, ought to go ahead. But it's not adopted, and it's not killed off. Any developer would be confronting the local planning authority with those draft documents as material considerations for decision-making, which, in my submission, they undoubtedly would be. And yet, the local planning authority had decided not to adopt them. It would not want to attach weight to them, but what a planning inspector on appeal would make of them is, in my submission, perhaps anyone's guess. It would involve, it would introduce extremely undesirable complicating factors, because you would have these leftover documents, which must, in my submission, carry some weight, because they'd been a significant way through a public process of examination and found sound with or without modifications. And in my submission, that result would be extremely undesirable, and it's one that follows from Maloney Friend's interpretation.
Doesn't Section 65.4 come about? Or am I in the wrong part of the forester?
As a matter of law, my lord, the power in Section 65 would exist, but my answer to that is, it would be equally undesirable to force the second respondent back onto its powers of intervention in those circumstances, because, two main reasons. One, it would inevitably create delay whilst the second respondent thought about what to do. And secondly, it would involve the expense of public resources in both time and money, all in the context of a draft plan where an inspector had concluded that the plan was fit for purpose. And of course, the relationship of the inspector to the local planning authority is not the same as the relationship of the inspector to the second respondent. Inspectors are essentially the second respondent's delegates in the planning process. There would be no public purpose served at all by making the second respondent intervene in planning, when its next steps agency, Planning the Environment Decisions Wales, had already concluded that the plan, as the inspector considered it should be, was fit for purpose and ought to be adopted in the public interest.
I wonder whether the position is as stark as you're suggesting, because one thing we cannot avoid in real life is a material change in circumstance. So, forget this case, we're not interested in the discussions which have been taking place politically locally. You could have another case where a local authority is faced with a radical change of circumstance, maybe locally, maybe funding, and that, through no fault of anybody's, the inspector wasn't able to take that into account during the examination process. On your submissions, nonetheless, a local authority would be forced to adopt the local plan despite that change in circumstance. But then, in the real world and the decision-making process, wouldn't inspectors and local authority, the local authority, be faced with the need to take into account that change in circumstance, and it's impacted the local plan anyway?
My lord, yes, but the two situations are, in my submission, clearly distinct, because in the situation with which the court is concerned, no one is contending that such a change in circumstances has taken place.
Yes, but I'm asking a question of principle.
If there was a material change of circumstances, national policy had changed, something significant had happened on the ground in Wexham, the gaming or loss of a major local employer, whatever it might be, that would clearly be an incentive for the second respondent to exercise their powers of intervention, because a plan which was formally thought to be fit for purpose and suited the public interest might no longer be thought to be because of that change in circumstances. But if nothing has changed, and the review process, the intervention process, would serve a clear public purpose of putting the plan into shape in the light of that change in circumstances. But if there wasn't a change of circumstances, in my submission, there really is no benefit to be served by requiring the second respondent to intervene. So I completely take your logic to point about a change of circumstances, but they are logically distinct situations, and they do point towards... The existence of a need to respond to a change of circumstances is not incompatible with a duty to adopt a plan, all of the things being equal.
No, it may not be, but it's nonetheless something which has to be grappled with, and what you end up with is an argument about whether the local authorities are obliged, nonetheless, to adopt a plan, bringing Section 38.6 into play, as opposed to a situation where it's not. But these things have all got to be evaluated as a matter of weight, anyway.
My lord, yes, but the change of circumstances that your lordship is postulating would have to occur in the time window between the inspector reporting and the expiry of the eight...
Or the conclusion of the examination process.
Or the conclusion of the examination... Well, yes, I think the conclusion of the examination process and the receipt of the report are essentially the same thing. But it would have to, that change of circumstances would have to occur in that window. If it hadn't, and everyone, the second respondent still thought the plan was fit for purpose and fit to adopt, in my submission, there really is no purpose in requiring the government to intervene. It's far more explicable, in my submission, that there is a duty to adopt unless the government chooses to step in. So if there hasn't been a change of circumstances, if nothing has changed, and the inspector still thinks the plan is fit to adopt, the government still thinks the plan is fit to adopt, it's far more explicable that there would be, in my submission, a duty to adopt, rather than requiring the central government to step in in those circumstances. A change of circumstances, I do accept, would generate different issues, but they don't, in my submission, they don't require a different interpretation to be put on Section 67. And if it is relevant to think about the situation in England, and I would urge caution upon drawing too many parallels with the law of England for the reasons I set out at the beginning of my submissions, that, what we're all calling the limbo problem, would not arise in England, because the withdrawal power clearly exists at any point up to adoption. So if the planning authority chooses not to adopt, it can simultaneously withdraw the plan, the plan is killed off, it's not left over, they don't have developers waiving the planning materials under their noses in application processes later on. So that difficulty would not arise in England, but it would arise in Wales.
Can they withdraw the plan in England if the Secretary of State's called it in under the equivalent of Section 65.4?
Off the top of my head, my lord, I'm afraid I'm going to know. There is a prohibition on adopting when the Secretary of State's given a direction in England, that's Section 21 Subsection 2b, tab 5, page 23. But the withdrawal power in Section 22, as it now stands, tab 7, page 28, just a very simple, bold statement, that it can be withdrawn at any stage up to adoption. I'm not aware of any restrictions on withdrawal if the Secretary of State in England has exercised powers to intervene. I may have missed it, but I'm not aware of one. So, my lord, I clearly accept that usually the word "may" denotes a discretion, but it doesn't always, and for the reasons I've endeavored to explain, my submission is that when looked in context, "may" imposes an obligation in this case, and the use of "may" is at least linguistically explicable, because it's regulating the form in which the plan is to be adopted, rather than whether it is to be adopted.
I put the point to Mr Parkeson this morning, I raised the question of the consequences of the obligation to, if there is an obligation to adopt, it limits local democratic job. I put it, but that's the point I was driving at. If that's right, if you accept that is a consequence of your interpretation, or interpretation you propose, wouldn't one expect that to be more clearly set out in the statute? For example, in Section 62 itself? Instead of simply saying the local authority must prepare a plan, wouldn't one expect it to say, "local authority must prepare and adopt a plan", to make it clear that's what was intended, as opposed to just relying on the interpretation of Section 67?
There would be a danger of making that sort of provision, my lord, because, of course, the authority is not always bound to adopt, because the inspector might recommend non-adoption if the plan has gone seriously wrong and it can't be rescued by modifications. So you could not have as bold or straightforward a statement as that in the legislation, because it wouldn't work in all circumstances.
Legislation envisages plan-making activity as a principle.
Yes.
But it doesn't recognize the inevitability of adoption.
That is, that must be right, my lord, yes, because, as I've said, if the planning process has seriously arrived, the plan doesn't get adopted.
For whatever reason.
For whatever reason. So that may explain why it wouldn't be in Section 62. But why, isn't it surprising that it's not spelt out more clearly if there is an obligation, given the consequences on democratic control, local democratic control? Two things, my lord. Certainly, if Section 67 used the word "must" rather than "may", I doubt we would be here. Secondly, but it doesn't, and we are, but secondly, there is nothing wrong in principle with legislation restricting a local planning authority's room for manoeuvre, because even on Maloney Friend's interpretation, the local planning authority's choice would only be adopt with any modifications that are recommended or not adopt. And so there's no escape to amend the plan in a way different from the way recommended by an inspector and then adopt it. That's a restriction on local democratic control, but it's one that is undoubtedly inherent in the legislation, even on Maloney Friend's interpretation.
Yes, but look, under his interpretation, there is, is there not, a more, an element of democratic control, which there isn't on yours.
That is true.
And my point is... Wouldn't, isn't it surprising that's not, if you're right, it's not spelt out more clearly?
My lord, in my submission, it's not particularly surprising, no. When one looks at the whole scheme of the Act, the local planning authority has a degree of flexibility in its planning functions, but it doesn't have a free hand. My lord, turn to Maloney Friend's argument in relation to the requirement for a resolution, and if the respondent's interpretation is correct, that would render the requirement for a resolution to adopt antiose. I would say three things now about that, in the light of the way Maloney Friend put it this morning. The first two are ones that are in my skeleton, and I needn't elaborate them, because your lordships are whatever, what the points are. First is, it is the public event that marks the acquisition of the plan, getting the status as a component of the development plan. It is a suitable public act. If the Act didn't make a provision of that sort, it would have to make something, some other provision. I mean, it couldn't be the case that the inspector's report became automatically adopted when it landed in the email inbox of the chief planning officer of the local planning authority. There would have to be some declaration in the Act as to a public event.
It's also making it clear, it's got to be a resolution of the authority, not some lesser constituent party.
And because of the way the particular delegation functions work in the statute, there has to be the full council. It can't be a committee or panel. So there's that point, my lord, yes. Secondly, it does mark the start of the challenge period in Section 113 of the Act. I don't think I need to take your lordships to precise details of that, but it's subsections 3b and 11d of Section 113. And then the third point, and the new one, as compared to my skeleton, in the light of the way Maloney Friend put it this morning, there is nothing objectionable or even particularly unusual in my submission about putting matters in front of committees or the full council that don't actually involve a choice, because committees and councils have reports put under their noses on a regular basis, and the recommendation is to note the report. If the report said, if the report said, "there's a legal obligation to adopt, please note that is the situation, we are required by resolution to adopt it", in my submission, there's nothing legally objectionable in that course of action at all.
Well, you showed us the, or somebody, either you or Mr Parkeson, showed us the resolutions, I think it was you.
Yes.
That were actually, whatever you used, resolutions, may, passed, put to a vote.
May, made a resolution, I think, yes.
Can we just look at...
Yes, certainly. They, the resolutions are at, the first one is, in the supplemental, my lord. The first one is tab 1, page 173.
So this was a resolution put to a vote in accordance with the standard order?
Yes. These resolutions are obviously recording the reasons as to why the plan's not adopted, rather than why it was.
Yes. Why was it put to a vote? If...
Because the only way full council can act is by resolution. It's the decision-making body, it's the decision-making format of the full council. It can only act by making a resolution.
Well, I think what you're submitting, perhaps rather, is that it can only make a resolution if it votes.
Yes. It has to make a resolution, and a resolution has to be achieved by a vote.
You can't make a resolution otherwise than by voting, but your submission is that on this, it can only vote one way. Or those voting can only vote one way.
Yes.
That's what you said.
And if you can only vote one way, it's not a vote, is it?
Well, it's not a vote with a choice, but it still is a vote.
Well, you might submit, I suppose, that this is a democratic process viewed overall, but this final formal element of it does not exhibit characteristics of a democratic vote.
Yes, because the...
Which classically, those voting can choose whether to vote for or against or to abstain.
Yes, essentially, yes, my lord.
It won't matter to the issue of statutory interpretation. Can I just seek your help on, whilst we've got the document, page 172 of the supplemental bundle? Because there was amendment which was proposed to be put to the full council, the foot of page 172. And it was suggested towards the end of that last paragraph, the failure to comply with Wales' future plan, that must be 2040, I think, means we cannot adopt the reporter's draft, but instead make representation to the assembly of government to intervene in the process. And then the monitoring office advises that was into a valid amendment. There's no provision within the legislation that allowed for intervention by the Welsh government, but I think on your submissions, there is.
There clearly is, because of the terms of Section 65 and, although it's not...
So... I mean, obviously, it's a matter for the ministers to decide whether to intervene or not, but members, we can see as a matter of practice, they have that alternative. They can ask for the Welsh government to intervene because of some flaw, for example, they see in the inspector's report.
Yes, or to adopt the circumstances your lordship put to me a few moments ago. If members thought there had been a significant change in circumstances, they could make an amendment to invite the Welsh government to intervene. But if that request was resolved upon and made and didn't succeed, there would still be a duty to adopt, in my submission. So perhaps requiring a resolution is not a completely empty exercise, if a circumstance like that could arise, where a member or group of members could invite an amendment to the resolution to have the Welsh government intervene. So perhaps there aren't circumstances in which the resolution process is completely a rubber-stamping exercise. But that doesn't remove, that doesn't undermine my submission that there's an obligation to adopt. My lord, the only other matter in the... My lord, the only, the only other matter in relation to the first limb of my argument that I ought to deal with perhaps is Milener Fenn's reliance in his skeleton, although not orally today, upon the, the recent English case of the Crown on the Application of Rights Community Action Limited versus the Secretary of State for levelling up housing in communities, which is at tab 47 of the Authority's bundle.
This is Mrs Justice Leaven.
That's the one, my lord. In my submission, there are two straightforward reasons as to why this decision does not assist either Milener Fenn's case or the task facing your lordships. The first and most obvious one in my submission is that this case is dealing with the law in England, not the law in Wales. And for the reasons I've endeavoured to explain, the two legal systems have parted company. But in any event, this is, this is a slightly unusual judicial review in that the judicial review in that case was not against the local planning authority's decision or lack of a decision on plan adoption or indeed on anything. It was a judicial review of challenging the inspector's recommendation. And the issue in that case was whether that recommendation amounted to a justiciable decision. Your lordships can see that from paragraph one of the judgment, which is at the bottom of page 328, apologies, it wasn't sidelined. This is an application for judicial review of the inspector's report into the named area action plan. So it was the inspector's, it's the inspector's report that was being tackled. The, the planning authority had not decided what to do in response to that report, and that is clear from paragraph 37 of her ladyship's judgment at page 340 of the bundle. Because the whole nature of the defendant and the interested parties' argument was that the challenge was premature because there had been no decision made, so the local planning authority hadn't formed a formal decision as to how it was going to respond to the inspector's recommendations. The claimant's case in that case is encapsulated at paragraph 42 of the judgment at page 342. That although the inspectors were making recommendations, in reality, they submitted this bound the local planning authority as to its future formal decision-making, a binary choice as to whether to accept or to abandon the plan. And that is the submission that Mrs Justice Leaven accepted in her conclusions at paragraph 47 at the bottom of page 343, which is the sidelined passage. And she accepted that the recommendation had important legal consequences because it, it kick-started the process of decision-making for adoption, either accept or not adopt, accept the recommendation or not adopt. There was no argument in that case as to what the nature of the adoption provision meant in England. That's, in my submission, a significant difference. And, and further, the point that's at stake before your lordships in this appeal was not one that Mrs Justice Leaven had to grapple with in rights, because she was only asking herself, only required to ask herself, whether there was a justiciable decision. Indeed, if, if the law in England were to be as the law in Wales, and I'm not submitting that it is, her ladyship would have come to exactly the same conclusion, but for stronger reasons, because the inspector's recommendation would have had even starker legal consequences than she thought it had in the case before her. So in my submission, your lordships can derive no assistance from the rights case. It's dealing with a different legislative code and more importantly, a different part of it, and the issue that her ladyship was having to decide is, is not related to the issue that your lordships are having to decide here.
But the question remains whether her understanding the law of England is right or wrong.
In, in my submission now, the law now, it's clearly right because of the extended power withdrawn in England.
And the reason why she considered that was to be able to work out under that statutory scheme whether the alternative was that you had to wait under section 113 until the plan had been adopted. Basically, she's just simply saying there's no point because the local authority's room to manoeuvre is constrained anyway if they are going to adopt.
Yes, and, and it's also part of the context of that case that neither the defendant nor the interested party sought to rely upon the preclusive provisions in section 113 either. So I, I do submit that rights is, is dealing with different issues and a different code and it's, it has no assistance to your lordships. My lord, the other two aspects of, of the main case I can deal with much more briefly. Your lordships have seen the way I've argued it in my skeleton argument in relation to the explanatory notes. The explanatory notes do explain, as Mr Parkinson's taken the court already and I don't necessarily require your lordships to turn it up. The explanatory notes in paragraph six said that the Act, 2004 Act was to give effect to government policy, that's Welsh government policy, as announced in November 2002. Your lordships were taken to what the consultation statement said about the adoption process. And the explanatory notes say that that was, the Act was intended to give effect to those proposals as explained by the minister in her September, in her November 2002 statement. Your lordships have in the bundles, the minister's statement, I'm not going to take you through, take your lordships to it because it would be a completely futile process, because one would be looking for something that isn't there.
Well, I was going to ask, is there a response to consultation? That's normal government process.
Not, not...
Insofar as there is, it seems to be the minister's statement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And the minister said nothing about the question of adoption procedures or duties. So all, all the court has is what is in the consultation document from January 2002, which your lordships have already been taken to, where I don't need to repeat what that is.
Whilst we're on extra statutory parliamentary material, is there anything in Hansard accompanying the 2000, the debates on the 2004 bill which helps the court at all?
As, as your lordship may recall, this issue came up in the section 113 challenge, which is happening alongside this. We all, we all looked for material. We, we found nothing either in, of any particular instructiveness in Hansard. There were discussions, but nothing that shed any particular light on it. And there was nothing in the proceedings of the Senate which shed any light on it.
Thank you.
And then the final plank, my lords, is using regulation 25 as an aid to construction. In my submission, it's clear that regulations can be used to aid interpretation of a principal act if they are roughly contemporaneous. Here they are very contemporaneous. And as Lord Hughes said in the case of the call, and your lordships have the references in the skeleton, in order to save time, I won't take your lordships to it unless your lordships would like me to. But Lord Hughes said that that principle applied particularly when the regulation and the Act are plainly intended to operate in tandem. And here we have an Act and regulations that are contemporaneous, and they are, in my submission, clearly intended to operate in tandem.
Could you just give us the paragraph reference in the call, please?
Yes, my lord, it's page 200 of the Authority's bundle, which is tab 41. And it's the sidelined passage at, at paragraph 105 of the judgment, particularly the last four or five lines. I agree, of course, that subordinate legislation can't control the meaning of the primary statutes, but whereas here the primary and subordinate legislation are part of a single scheme to substitute one statutory regime for another that are plainly intended to operate in tandem, it's not irrelevant to take account of indications of consistency between them.
The other sidelined passage in this authority was pages 176 to 178. This is a case all about the introduction of the proceeds of Crime Act 2002.
What is this?
And my, my reading of those other sidelined passages was that the court was dealing with the construction of the delegated legislation. The, the issue was whether offences, it was all to do with the divide between offences, I think before March 2003 and offences after March 2003.
My lord, yes, they were, but they were having to make that decision in light of what the principal act meant as well.
But I don't think the principal act said very much about it with section 156. I, I, if there's anything that's more helpful than, than, than I'd be grateful to see.
My lord, I can't point to anything other than the sidelined passages in this case, but I, I do particularly rely upon paragraph 105 of Lord Hughes's judgment.
Right.
And, and, in short, if we're right about the meaning of section 67, regulation 25, the words of that support the respondent's interpretation of section 67.
I'm just, I'm just wondering whether if you're right about section 67, you're right about section 67 and you don't need regulation.
No, probably not.
Twenty-five.
If we're right about section 67, then one wouldn't need the course of regulation.
I think that follows, doesn't it?
Yes, and if we're wrong about section 67, then the regulation can't impose a different meaning on the section of the Act.
If you're wrong about section 67, you're wrong about section 67. Seems to be an inexorable logic really to... Is that right? I mean, I, if that's right, then say it.
My lord must be right. The respondent's notice therefore may not be central to the denunciations that the court has to make. As Justice Eyre made it clear, as, as Mr Parkinson draw your lordships' attention to, he was not relying on regulation 25 to make his decision. We do in brief terms say that the regulation which you were taken to, it's tab 30 of the Authority's bundle, if your lordships would like to have a look at it again, page 82. In our, in my submission, it clearly does impose an obligation to adopt. As a matter of common sense, the regulation is only engaged if the authority is, gets to the stage of considering adoption of the plan. If, if the inspector has recommended withdrawal and non-adoption, one would never reach the stage of making the decision on the regulation 25. So I don't accept Milener Fenn's contention that this regulation has to be read as though it applies to all circumstances, it doesn't. As a matter of language, the regulation does not say something like, your party must decide whether to adopt or must make a decision about adoption within eight weeks. It's a clear obligation to adopt within eight weeks. And the regulation is capable of being read as though the, unless otherwise agreed in writing by the National Assembly, now the Welsh Ministers, regulated the timescale rather than the decision as to what to do. And if, if Milener Fenn is right, there is no obvious reason why, if, if the only, the only obligation pursuant to regulation 25 was to consider the question of adoption within eight weeks, there is in my submission no obvious reason why there would be a time limit imposed in relation to such a discretionary decision. And there's a, there's a further point, my lords, which occurs in relation to regulation 25, which again, in my submission, is an indication of what regulation 25 is doing. Your lordships can see that paragraph one of the regulation deals with the time limit. And then the rest of the regulation says what happens after adoption, making, making the adoption statement, making the plan materials available for inspection and so on. What it does not do is make any prescription as to what happens if there is a decision not to adopt. Now, if Milener Fenn is right and the regulation was only dealing with the timescales for making a decision, in my submission, the regulation would say on the one hand, if you decide to adopt, this is what you do, and on the other, if you decide not to adopt, this is what you do. But the regulation doesn't do that. And the fact that the regulation doesn't do that, in my submission, is an indication that this regulation is further support for the, for the imposition of a duty to adopt, not a free choice. It is, it's, it's another aspect of the limbo argument, I suppose, my lords. If you're free not to adopt, what happens to the plan materials and everything else after that decision? This regulation, would in my submission, tell us if, if that was an option open to the authority, but it doesn't. My lord, that's, that's the first respondent's position. I've tried to marry conciseness with comprehensiveness. If I've failed, I'm obviously more than happy to answer any questions that your lordships have, otherwise those are my submissions.
That's very, very helpful, Mr Carter, thank you.
I think I may, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr Corner.
Thank you, my lord. We say, we say the Welsh Government that the council had a duty to adopt the LDP and that that duty arose pursuant to section 67 and/or regulation 25. My lord, I won't say a great deal about the background. You've kindly indicated that you've read the skeleton arguments and you're familiar obviously with the factual background. But just shortly by way of background, I think it's agreed at the bar that before the 2004 Act, there was no duty to adopt, either in England or Wales. That gave rise to considerable problems. And in the case of many authorities, a long series of inquiries, planning inquiries, as one set of modifications was put forward, made subject to a planning inquiry, not deemed appropriate by the authority, and then another one was produced and so forth. And so the 2004 Act sought to resolve these problems by imposing a more structured framework. And that is why in Wales, the Welsh Government sought to impose a duty to adopt, which we say exists. We've done what we can to ensure that councils, local planning authorities generally know that they are to adopt local development plans, LDPs, as per the inspector's recommendations. See the Development Plan Manual at paragraph 6.59 in supplementary bundle, volume three, at page 321. Can we just go there?
Yes.
Please.
Yes. The, the date of this is...
It's 2020.
Yes.
Paragraph 6.59.
And I'm sorry, Mr Corner, the status of this is...
Well, I, I was coming to the status.
Sorry, yes.
No, 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 my lord, I'm glad you asked. The manual is guidance which has to be taken into account by local planning authorities in accordance with section 75 of the Act, which is your authority 25 at page 65.
Yes.
And indeed, in the Authority's bundle, right at the back, at document 51, we've produced, or reproduced, section, paragraph 2.2. That's page 399 of the bundle. 2.2 of the Development Plan Manual, which... which says, "The manual doesn't constitute national policy, it is guidance. LPAs must have regard to guidance when preparing an LDP." So the Development Plan's manual couldn't be clearer. And we have tried to persuade this local authority, the best we can, to adopt. And can I just refer to one letter? It's the letter from the Welsh Government to the leader of the council of eighth of June last year, which is in your supplemental, supplementary bundle at page one eight one. It's an answer. This is to a document from the leader of Wrexham Council and the leader of the Conservative Group, which is at pages one seven seven to one eighty. I won't, if I may, read this out, but can I just ask you to note it? And that it emphasizes the importance of producing LDPs and makes the point in the last paragraph on the first page, "Your council's the only one in Wales to fail to meet its statutory obligation to adopt an LDP." So in short, we are very anxious that this LDP, well, which has been adopted, remain adopted. And we have done our very best to make sure that this local authority, as all local authorities in Wales, know that they have a duty to adopt and that the inspector's report is binding upon them. So that's all I wish to say by way of introduction, if I may. Can I come on then to section sixty-seven? Section sixty-seven imposes a duty on the authority to adopt, either as originally prepared, if that's what the inspector recommends, that's sixty-seven one, or with modifications, if that's what the inspector recommends. The expression "may adopt" in those subsections is just referring to the different circumstances in which the obligation to adopt arises. So therefore, section sixty-seven one tells us that the local planning authority may only adopt an LDP as originally prepared, if that's what the inspector recommends. And similarly, in section sixty-seven subsection two, that it may only adopt with amendments, if the inspector has recommended them.
Well, that's consistent with a conditional power. There was nothing to stop Parliament, consistent with your reading, saying, "Must adopt a local plan if..."
No, there was nothing to stop it. But Parliament didn't have to use those words. I suggest that when one looks at this section, the statutory context, and the other material, including the explanatory memorandum and regulation twenty-five, which the appellant agrees, can be used to help interpret these provisions. The meaning is clear, and that the word "must" did not have to be used.
But as I understand what you've just said about section sixty-seven, and the law's obligation that it is a conditional power, are you saying that there's an obligation arising under section sixty-seven, or not?
Yes, I am, I am. I'm saying that section sixty-seven imposes an obligation, and that the use of the word "may" in both of these subsections simply refers to the different circumstances in which the obligation to adopt arises. So yes, I am saying there's an obligation.
And the obligation arises in section sixty-seven, essentially?
Yes. Pardon?
In section sixty-seven.
Yes, yes. And alternatively, if the word "may" confers a power, there is, in the words of Benyon at paragraph three point eight, and the case Lord Justice Murray's words in "Pelling and families need fathers", this is a case where failure to exercise the enabling power would undermine the legislative scheme. And it's compellingly clear that that is so. But my first submission is that, I don't need to demonstrate that, because section sixty-seven, in section sixty-seven, the use of the word "may" simply refers to the different circumstances in which the obligation to adopt arises.
I'm sorry, I'm just not entirely clear. I'm sure it's my fault.
I'm sure it's not.
It is, Mr Corne. I understand this submission that section sixty-seven one is intended to define what the local authority may adopt. It may adopt a local plan as originally prepared, if that's what's recommended.
Yes.
So that is, as my lord says, a conditional power. That's what it may do.
Yeah.
But "may" is also, "may" is doing two things, though. You say "may" is also imposing the obligation.
Well, I say that it is clear from looking at section sixty-seven that it does impose an obligation, but that the purpose of the use of the word "may" in the two subsections is to make clear that you can only adopt as originally proposed, if that's what the inspector recommends, and you can only adopt with modifications, if that's what the inspector recommends.
But if Parliament had intended to confer discretion, the formulation you've just put forward would be consistent with that?
Well, my lord, the word "must" did not need to be used. And I say, having regard to the context, it was sufficient for Parliament to use the words that it did in section sixty-seven one. But that even if I'm wrong, and even if the word "may" confers a power, then this is a case where a failure, it is compellingly clear that a failure to exercise the power would undermine the legislative scheme. So, my lord, if I can come on then to deal with statutory scheme, and then the points on the explanatory memorandum, and then regulation twenty-five, in that order. Can I begin with the statutory scheme? And I'll start, if I may, with section sixty-two subsection one, which is your authority sixteen at page forty-eight. Fundamentally, we know from section sixty-two subsection one that local LPAs must prepare an LDP. But section sixty-two subsection A says that a plan, on page fifty, says that a plan is an LDP only insofar as it's adopted by a resolution of the local planning authority as an LDP, or approved by the Welsh Government. So the local planning authority can only fulfill its duty to prepare an LDP, which it is under pursuant to section sixty-two one, by taking a plan through the process, culminating in the adoption of the LDP. The only other circumstances in which a plan can become an LDP will be if the Welsh Government intervenes. So can I just deal with the powers of intervention, please?
Just before you do that,
Yes.
Focusing on the words "must prepare",
Yes.
Do you submit that "prepare" embraces, necessarily embraces, every step up to and including adoption?
Yes.
In all circumstances?
Yes. That's their statutory duty. That's what they've got to do.
Are you going to make any submissions on resolution? What that, how that?
Yes.
Well, I'll come back to that.
Shall I do it now?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
When convenient.
But I will come back to that. I do want to deal with that. I wanted to deal for the minute, if I might, with the Welsh Government's powers of intervention in section sixty-five and section seventy-one. So you've seen them already, you've been taken to them. We know that under section sixty-five subsection four, the Welsh Government may direct that the plan is submitted to it for approval. And under section seventy-one, it can hold an independent examination if it thinks the authority is failing to do anything that it should. But I say that the legislature surely didn't intend that the Welsh Government's intervention powers under section seven sixty-five should have to be used in this situation, where the examination is over, the inspector has reported, and the inspector has recommended adoption. Nobody is suggesting, and the appellant doesn't suggest, that the section seventy-one power would be appropriate here. So attention, focus on the section sixty-five power. And section sixty-five five C, which is in divider nineteen, page fifty-eight, I say that that gives us an indication of what the legislature intended and considered it was doing in part six. Because section sixty-five five C provides that if the direction is given after the plan has been submitted for examination, the person appointed to do the examination must make his recommendation to the Welsh Government. So the way that provision is written assumes that the inspector has yet to write their report, as opposed to the present case, where the inspectors have already written their report and submitted it to the authority. And that supports the view that the legislature considered that it wouldn't be necessary for the Welsh Government to intervene once the inspector had written a report recommending adoption, because there was, would be, a duty on the authority to adopt.
But is that tantamount to saying that the ministers can't intervene once the report?
No, I don't say that.
No, because if the power exists, it exists.
Yeah.
So I don't see where this takes us.
I agree, I agree. My point is, and I said this in my skeleton argument, I'm not suggesting that the power doesn't exist. But the fact that section sixty-five five C is written in the way that it is, is, I suggest, an indication that the legislature did not intend that intervention would be necessary or would happen in a case like we have here, where the inspector has reported and recommended adoption.
I'm just trying to, forgive me for a moment, I'm just trying to imagine where the section sixty-five four power might be used.
Yeah.
I suppose it may be a situation where the Welsh ministers are not themselves happy with the inspector's report.
No.
So that would imply that they can be unhappy with it.
I agree.
But the local authority can't.
Well, I agree, but that's...
But because of a change of circumstance, for example. Because of a change of circumstance.
Well, maybe, or... But that's where we are. That is the nature of the division of powers between the Welsh Government and local authorities. Local authorities are bound by the inspector's reports. The Welsh Government is not. That is the structure of the legislation. But my point about section sixty-five five C is that the way it is written, which is if the direction is given after the authority has submitted the plan, the inspector must make his recommendation to the assembly. It's clear from the way it is written that the legislature was not intending that in the situation like we have here, there would be a discretion in the authority to adopt or not. As far as the legislature was concerned, it didn't need to deal with the situation in which the inspector had already reported, because the authority would be under a duty to adopt. So I agree, and I've said in the skeleton, that the Welsh Government can intervene at any time up to adoption. That's clear from section sixty-five four. But this, in my submission, is an indication of what the legislature thought was the obligation on authorities to adopt LDPs where the inspector had recommended adoption.
But what I'm struggling with at the moment, and help me if you can, is that that submission would surely work equally well, wouldn't it, if this were a discretion, not a duty?
No. I, it wouldn't, because because the point of the power or intervention in section sixty-five four through to section sixty-five five is if the authority, if the assembly, the Welsh Government, is not content and it deems necessary to intervene.
Yes.
And the point I'm, the short point I'm seeking to make is that the fact that the section sixty-five five C is framed as it is shows that as far as the Welsh Government was concerned, it wasn't just a discretion, it wasn't a discretion in the authority to follow, whether to follow the inspector's recommendations. There was a duty, and therefore it, section sixty-five five C, is written assuming that the direction in sixty-five five, sixty-five four is given before the inspector has reported. And that's the point that I seek to make.
Just looking at other parts of section sixty-five five, A,
Yes.
if a direction is given, and as you rightly say, it can be given at any stage up to adoption.
Yeah.
The authority must not take any step in connection with the adoption of the plan. the authority must not take any step in connection with the adoption of the plan until the ministers have given their decision. And then D, the plan has no effect unless it has been approved by the ministers, unless they withdraw the directive.
So it's stopped.
Yeah. So plainly in those circumstances, the duty cannot arise.
No.
But I'm just wondering whether these provisions are perhaps, following on from my lord's question, neutral? They don't point one way or the other?
Well, my lord, my short point is, yes, the authority is told that if the Welsh Government intervenes under section sixty-five-four, the authority cannot adopt, and the plan has no effect unless the Welsh Government has approved. But if the Welsh Government had considered that there was a discretion in the local authority as to whether to adopt, I'm suggesting that section sixty-five-five-C would likely have been written differently.
How do you say it would have been written differently?
Well, because it might have been written so as to provide that if the direction was given after the authority has submitted the plan, but before the inspector has reported, the person appointed to carry out the examination must make his recommendations to the assembly. That's actually what the relevant legislation, the corresponding legislation says in England.
Forgive me, I missed that. Could you just say that again, please?
Yeah. If the direction is given, it could have said, my lord, Lord Justice Baker invited me to say this, what it would have said or could have said. If the direction is given after the authority has submitted the plan, but before the inspector has reported, the inspector must make his recommendations to the assembly.
Doesn't C cover the situation where he's reported?
Well, I've said that on interpretation, it does, but there's a mismatch, if I may so submit, within section sixty-five-five-C, because we have here a situation where the inspector has reported, the inspectors...
And there's an eight-week period under regulation?
Indeed, in which...
When, up to eight weeks, when after, if I've got this right, after the report and before it has to be adopted.
Yeah.
So in that period, C the C was to apply?
Yes, yes, yes. But it is clear from the way that C has been worded that the Welsh Government did not, the legislature, did not intend that it would be necessary for it to intervene where the inspector had reported and recommended adoption. Because, in fact, what would happen in this case where the inspector has reported is that the inspector would have to report again. If the direction is given, it says, after the authority have submitted the plan, the person appointed to carry out the examination must make his recommendations to the assembly. But the person appointed has already made their recommendations. So what is the point of the duplication?
Well, this may be just procedural. This may just be adjectival law, in the sense that once the direction is given, at whatever stage, the question of the future of the plan, whether it's approved or not, has got to be taken by the ministers. So I suppose this might be covering two situations, C. One is where there hasn't been a report yet. The other is where there has been a report to the local authority, but the ministers are going to take the decision. So formally, that document, assuming no other one is produced, it then has to go to the minister, so they react to the report.
Well, my lord, I suggest, I suggest, and this is the extent of my suggestion, it is, it just, the fact that the legislation has been written in this way is an indication that the legislature did not contemplate that it would be necessary to intervene in the situation that we have, where the inspector has written their report, recommended, recommendation to adopt. And the reason that they didn't contemplate that is because, as far as the legislature was concerned, there's a duty to adopt. That's my point.
Isn't the distinction between sixty-five-five-B and C a procedural distinction, really?
Well, yes.
If the direction is given before they've submitted the plan,
Yes.
then the assembly has to go through the sixty-four process itself.
Surely.
But if it's after they've submitted the plan, it doesn't have to do that. Instead, the person appointed to carry out the examination makes recommendations to the assembly rather than to the
Well.
local authority.
That's what it says. That's what it says. But, but had the legislature contemplated that there was that there was other than an obligation to adopt a plan recommended by the inspector, I'm suggesting that it's unlikely that section sixty-five-five-C would have been written in that way. Because section sixty-five-five-C is, as I say, it's assuming that the person appointed hasn't yet made their recommendation. That's it. My lord, that's all I say on the duty to prepare a plan and get it adopted under section sixty-two. Can I come on to withdrawal?
Yes.
We know that once an LDP has been submitted for independent examination, the authority can withdraw only if directed to do so by the Welsh Government under section sixty-six, or if the inspector so recommends. And my lord, that means that if an authority doesn't wish to adopt the LDP following the inspector's report recommending adoption, there is a limbo. No up-to-date LDP, the local authority can't withdraw it. And I say that can't have been the intention of the legislation. It might be said that to break the deadlock, the Welsh Government can intervene. But it can't realistically have been expected that the Welsh Government would direct the authority to withdraw the LDP under section sixty-six. Because by definition, the Welsh Government wants local authorities to adopt LDPs which have been recommended for adoption by an inspector. And furthermore, as I've already explained or suggested, it clearly wasn't expected that the section seventy-one power would be used in this case. As I understand it, the appellant accepts that. And for reasons I've already given...
Where does this go then? You're suggesting there's nothing the Welsh Government could do in those circumstances?
No, I'm not suggesting that the Welsh Government has no powers to intervene.
I mean, it could intervene just to prove the plan itself.
Well, yes, but...
Not very difficult.
My... Well, my lord, if I may say so, it could well be difficult. Because the Welsh Government would have to... If it's not going to direct withdrawal under section sixty-six, which it's not going to, where it regards there as being a duty to adopt, it would have to intervene under... If it intervened under section seventy-one, it would have to hold a whole new examination. And if it intervened under section sixty-five, then, as I've suggested, it was not intended by the legislature that the section sixty-five power would need to be used in the circumstance where the inspector had recommended adoption.
Well, if you forgive me, that's a slightly different point. Let's say, the real question is whether it can do something under section sixty-five. And you were trying to suggest it would be difficult. But if the report has been produced already to the local authority,
Yeah.
then a section sixty-five-four direction is issued, why can't the Welsh ministers simply say, "We like this report, we like the plan, we approve"?
Well, my lord, I'm not suggesting other than that the Welsh Government has, and had, well, had, has before adoption the power to intervene. We say we have the power to intervene under section sixty-five. But, my lord, what I am suggesting is that the way that the legislation is framed in part six suggests that it was intended to impose an obligation to adopt on local authorities in section sixty-seven.
Let's say if you...
So that the limbo that I'm suggesting, and that is referred to in the documents, would not exist.
Let's say you're right for the sake of argument, that there is an obligation to adopt. Let's say a local authority doesn't comply with it. The Welsh ministers could still intervene and approve the plan themselves.
Well, yes.
Rather than it have to go through the courts.
But, but, my lord, why should that be?
That's what default powers are for when they're given to ministers.
Well, but, my lord, why should that be the case when it is clear that it was intended to impose an obligation to adopt? Is, when one looks at the structure of part six...
To help you, to help you, Mr. Corneille.
Yes.
That's a question. The answer is because one can reach this hiatus, which was described in the letter you showed us.
Yeah.
In which this authority was said to be the only one that hadn't met its obligation as it was put to adopt. And the legislation, the statutory scheme resolves this, which provides default intervention powers, which enables the Welsh Government to take the matter into its own hands and render this a development plan. And that it could do, and the power is there to do it. So it's not as if the Welsh Government is left frustrated by the, I'll use neutral language, the non-adoption, which was complained of in that correspondence.
Well, the Welsh Government has powers to intervene before adoption. But what I'm suggesting is that when you look at the overall structure of part six, it's quite plain that it was not intended that it should have to use those powers when an inspector had recommended adoption, because it was intended that there should be an obligation to adopt. In other words, that the inspector's report recommending adoption would be binding. And indeed, my lord, I suggest that is clear not just from the statutory context, but also from the other material, the explanatory memorandum and Regulation twenty-five. So I'll come and deal with those, if I may.
Yes, of course.
So turning to the explanatory memorandum, my lord, this has already been introduced to you. The relevant authority divider is forty-eight, page three-five-three.
These are the explanatory notes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And you've been taken to paragraph six, which is sidelined, and the statement that the act was to give effect to the assembly's policy formulated in the light of responses to the consultation document as announced by the Assembly Minister for Environment in November two thousand and two. So then, if I may, we go to the supplementary bundle in divider three, at page two-seven-one. And I drew attention in the skeleton argument to paragraph thirty-five. Local planning authorities would be required to publish an adopted version of the plan incorporating any changes from the scrutiny process within a fixed period. The plan could automatically be adopted after a set period of legal challenge. And my lord, another friend, Mr. Parkinson, suggested that those were not binding words. They were words for a timetable. My lord, I suggest they clearly are binding words. Required to publish an adopted version of the plan incorporating any changes from the scrutiny process within a fixed period. Any changes from the scrutiny process can only refer to the modifications required by the inspector, because that's what the scrutiny process is. And so, my lord, I suggest the appellant is incorrect to suggest those are not words that refer to a binding obligation to adopt the plan. They clearly are. And then if one goes to the November two thousand and two statement from the ministers, and looking at page three oh four, volume three of the supplementary documents, page three oh four,
Yes.
where, if I can summarise, the inspector makes clear that the Welsh Government will be bringing in primary legislation and secondary legislation to introduce the new style local authority development plans. And there's no indication there of any approach being applied which is different from that set out in Planning Delivery for Wales. So in other words, my lord, the explanatory notes clearly say that the act is meant to give effect to the Welsh Government's policy. The policy was set out in Planning Delivery for Wales, and there's absolutely no indication anywhere that that policy changed. So I suggest that that is highly relevant for the interpretation of the provisions in these notes.
Just going back to the, I beg your pardon, going back to the explanatory notes,
Sure.
just to see if I've understood this.
Yes.
At forty-eight, page three-five-three, at the bottom of the page, the act gives effect to the assembly government's policy formulated in the light of responses to the consultation document as announced by... So if you're looking to see where, if I've understood this correctly, where the policy is, not surprisingly, it's in what the minister announced in November two thousand and two?
Yes. And my point is...
Not in the consultation document. That's not a policy document.
No, but she said, no, but I've made clear submissions, well, as clear as I can make them, on what the consultation document said. what the consultation document said. And my point is, yes, the the policy is as announced by the Minister for Environment, as I've taken to it. And my point is, there's not a single indication of any change from the approach set out in the consultation document in relation to this matter. So I was going to move on, if I might, to taking into account when construing section sixty seven, taking regulation twenty five into account. And, my lord, as I understand it, it's not disputed by the appellant that regulation twenty five may be taken into account in order to assist with the construction of the act, including section sixty seven. As per Benion at twenty four point eighteen, at your page three, nine, sorry, authority fifty, page three, nine, two, and the authorities cited there. Delegated legislation made under an act can be taken into account as persuasive authority on the legal meaning of the act's provisions, especially where the delegated legislation is roughly contemporaneous with the act. And, my lord, I've made the points in my skeleton about the timing. And as I understand it, it's not disputed in this case that the delegated legislation is indeed, in this case, in the twenty oh five regulations, roughly contemporaneous with the act.
Contemporary with the two thousand and four act?
Yes.
That received royal assent in May two thousand and four.
Thirteenth of May.
Yes. The, as I recollect, the regulations, regulation twenty five was laid before the Welsh Assembly in two thousand and five, October. I may have got that wrong.
No, I don't think you have.
Not very contemporaneous.
The regulations were made on the eleventh of October twenty oh five, and they came into force on the fifteenth of October twenty oh five. And, my lord, the point I make in my skeleton argument is that the cases show, as Benion says, that for delegated legislation to be taken into account in construing the main act, it does not need to be contemporaneous with the act. And I've quoted paragraph forty four of my skeleton, two cases in relation to this.
Do you want to look at those?
Yes. Scott, can I take you first to Scottish and Newcastle versus, I pronounce it, Ragus? It's at authority thirty nine. And, my lord, in brief, the act to be interpreted was the Landlord and Tenant Covenant Act of nineteen ninety five. And it received royal assent on the nineteenth of July of nineteen ninety five. The delegated legislation was the, it's a slightly long title, Landlord and Tenant Covenant, bracket, covenants, close bracket, Act nineteen ninety five, bracket, notices, close bracket, regulations, nineteen ninety five. And if we look at paragraph twenty eight, which is on page one, four, eight, I think.
Yes.
We can see that those regulations were made in November nineteen ninety five. That's said at two, five, oh, four, B, which is on your page four, one, four, nine. And they came into effect on the first of January nineteen ninety six. And that's, we know that because it says it at two, five, oh, three, E, part of the sideline passage. And so, my lord, that was a situation of an act receiving royal assent in nineteenth of July, in July nineteen ninety five. Regulations made in November nineteen ninety five coming into effect beginning of nineteen ninety six. And Lord Scott said in that case at two, five, oh, four, at paragraph twenty eight, at two, five, oh, four, B, which is at page one, four, nine, that the regulations conform part of the contextual background against which section seventeen of the relevant act should be construed. And he referred to Benion. And, my lord
But do you accept what's said just before there? They cannot add to or detract from section seventeen correctly construed?
Well, my lord, they they are, they can be relevant in construing, in this case, in that case, section seventeen. You may also have a case. And I'm not sure that it was the case in that case, but you may also have a case where there is power, the act, the relevant act, which gives power to make subordinate legislation, gives power to amend.
Yeah, the primary legislation.
Yeah.
Yes, we haven't got that here.
Well,
Have we?
If we look at section one hundred and twenty two, we do. Section one hundred and twenty two subsection three, we do. So if we look at you were handed at the beginning of today, the relevant the originally enacted provision of section one, two, two, which is in divider twenty eight.
Right. Thank you.
And it's, so it's divider, I do apologise, divider twenty nine. It's twenty nine and it's page seventy nine, A.
Thank you.
Seventy nine, A. And if one looks at paragraph, oh, one, two, two, sub-paragraph three, one, two, two, one, two, two, subsection three. Subordinate legislation may make different provision for different purposes. B may include such supplementary incidental consequential saving or transitional provisions, including provision amending, repealing or revoking enactments as the person making the subordinate legislation thinks necessary or expedient. Now, I say I don't need to rely
On relying on that hen of the eighth element.
Well, I, I'm entitled to.
Which you're not.
I don't have to, no, I, I, I do if I need to. But I don't have to, because I say that nobody has suggested that regulation twenty five is ultra-viruses section sixty seven.
Yes, but nonetheless, forgive me, if you go back to section one hundred and twenty two.
Yes.
You're talking about the power to amend primary legislation.
Yes.
And subsection five says a statute instrument is subject to annulment pursuant to, that's the negative resolution procedure, I think. Unless it contains, you go over the page to F, provision amending or repealing enactment contained in an act. So it'd be subject to, as one would expect, positive approval by Parliament, because it's amending a primary. Now, do we know whether or not
Well
these regulations were made under that provision?
Um, my lord.
Because this is a new point, I think.
Yes. Um, my lord, in the amended version of section one hundred and twenty two, which you have at page seventy seven onwards, specific provision is made in subsection six, B, about the very point that your lordship is talking about. Six, B, it says, the Welsh ministers must not make statute instrument containing subordinate legislation which includes provision amending or repealing an enactment contained in primary legislation unless a draft of the instrument has been laid before and approved by Resolution of the National Assembly of Wales. But, my lord, that did not apply when that is an amendment that was brought in in twenty twenty fifteen by the Planning Act Wales. As footnote six tells us. So, my lord, the need for an affirmative resolution was only brought in in twenty fifteen. There was no need for an affirmative resolution.
I'm sorry, I'm, maybe I'm being a bit slow, but one, two, two, in the original
Yes.
legislation, which you've given us helpfully at pages seventy nine, A and B.
Sure.
I think we're talking about an SI under subsection five, F.
Yes, I think we are.
But then if you go to subsection six, an SI in five, F must not be made, and it's the same provision, isn't it?
Well
It's got to be, it's got to go before the UK Parliament.
My lord, the, the, I take your point, I don't know the answer.
Well, what we've got is an SI, SI made by the Welsh Assembly.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. But, my lord, as I said to Lord Justice Baker a moment ago, I don't need to rely on a power to amend, but because there's no evidence that the Welsh government ever considered that regulation twenty five was amending section sixty seven, or indeed any other part of the act. The, I say that when you take into account regulation twenty five, along with, as an aid to interpreting section sixty seven, it assists in reaching the conclusion that section sixty seven imposes an obligation to adopt. Shall I say, shall I put that again?
No, no, you don't need to put it again, I'm just thinking about it. Thank you.
Yeah, so the Scottish Newcastle case was a case where the delegated legislation was not contemporaneous with the main act, but it was still used to assist in its interpretation. And the same is true in relation to the McCool case. My lord, the act in that, sorry, the McCool case is
At forty one, I think.
Yes, forty one, thank you very much. The act in question there was the Proceeds of Crime Act two thousand and two. And it received royal assent on the twenty fourth of July of two thousand and two. The delegated legislation in that case was the Proceeds of Crime Act two thousand and two, commencement number five, transitional provisions, savings and amendment order made on the twentieth of February twenty oh three. And we know that from paragraph forty one of the judgment. Sorry, paragraph twenty one of the judgment. It was those regulations as amended by further regulations made two weeks later on the sixth of March of two thousand and three. And, my lord, the facts are these in summary. The defendants were convicted of fraud. The prosecution applied for confiscation orders under section one hundred and fifty six of the two thousand and two act, disclaiming reliance on any of the offences of which the defendants had been convicted, which were committed before the commencement of section one hundred and fifty six. So the prosecution said, we're not relying on any of the offences that you were convicted of, which were committed before the commencement of section one hundred and fifty six. The defendants appealed, saying that if any of the offences on which a defendant had been tried predated the commencement of the two thousand and two act, none of the offences, including those committed after that date, could be dealt with under the two thousand and two act. Section one hundred and fifty six contained the power to make confiscation orders. Section one hundred and fifty six subsection two, which is set out at paragraph sixty four on page one hundred and eighty eight. Section one hundred and fifty six subsection two provided that one of the conditions that had to be met for the prosecution to proceed under that section was that he is convicted of any offence or offences in proceedings before the Crown Court. The commencement order of section, of two thousand and three provided at article four, which is set out at paragraph sixty five of the judgment on page one, eight, nine, that section one, five, six didn't have effect where the offence or any of the offences mentioned in section one, five, six, subsection two was committed before twentieth, twenty fourth of March two thousand and three, which was the commencement date of the two thousand and two act. So as Lord Justice Hughes said at paragraph sixty six, also on one, eight, nine, the issue in the case was which offences are contemplated by section one hundred and fifty six subsection two? and are thus referred to in Article 4 of the commencement order. Is it any offence for which the defendant was before the Criminal Court? Or is it any offence which is relied on by the prosecution as justifying confiscation proceedings? The court held that it was the latter and dismissed the defendant's appeal. Lord Hughes, with whose speech Lady Black conferred at 105, which is on page 200, which has been sidelined, used the commencement order as amended to help answer the question that he posed about what Section 156, subsection 2 meant, saying that if the defendants were correct, Articles 8, 2 and 8, 3 of the commencement order would be unnecessary. And Lord Kerr, the other member of the majority, used Articles 8, 2 and 3 in the same way as one can see from the highlighted paragraphs 19 to 22, culminating in 22. So, my lord, I do say that McCool is a case where the... What had to be construed was the issue was the construction of primary legislation, Section 156, 2 of the 2002 Act, and that delegated legislation made not contemporaneously with it was used in order to assist with its interpretation. So, my lord, I would say that is why the appellant rightly has not disputed that Regulation 25 can be used to assist in the construction of Section 67.
Well, I thought that was common ground.
Oh dear, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
I've detained you unnecessarily.
I'm not sure. You've demonstrated why it should be common ground.
Yeah. I... I'm... I'm sorry, my lord.
No, no, not at all.
I only did that. I only went through all that because my lord, Lord Justice Holgate, said at one stage that the... That he thought that the issue in McCool was the construction of delegated legislation.
That's how the headnote's written.
I know. I'm sorry.
But I'm not even sure that...
I don't think that the headnote is accurate.
With all due respect in that speech, it's not entirely clear to me that it isn't ultimately a question of what the delegated legislation means.
Well, my lord, that's not the way that Lord Hughes and the rest of the majority thought about it. And the reason I spent a bit of time in my preparation work looking at the facts of this case was that I realised the headnote isn't right either. It's just not accurate.
But the submission you made at the end of what you'd shown us in McCool was that the statutory instrument was used in the interpretation of...
Yes.
And that's a reasonably broad proposition.
Yes, it is. And I'm coming to what Regulation 25 now means now.
And that's what I took to be common ground, like Mr Parkinson thinks acknowledging that it is.
Good.
To that degree, he's not acknowledging any more than that.
No. No. That's good enough for my purposes.
But in that context, that's why it was relevant to ask you earlier on in case of ragoons, whether you accepted also what the Supreme Court or the House of Lords, I forget which House of Lords, were saying in paragraph 28, that what's in the delegated legislation can't subtract or detract from the primary legislation.
Well, um, uh, no, but...
I mean, is that common ground as well?
Well, can I just... I will answer that. Um, but, my lord, I just think we have to be just a little careful about what that means. Because if we look at what Benyon says, my lord, I'm looking at paragraph 3.17, the interpretation of delegated legislation, which is in Your Authority 50 at page 386 onwards. And, my lord, I'm looking at footnote 2, which is on page 389. Does your lordship have that?
Yes.
It says, "The seventh edition of this book, in common with earlier editions, stated that the intention of Parliament, as indicated in the Enabling Act, is the prime guide to the meaning of delegated legislation. It's suggested that this point puts the point too high, or at least needs some unpacking. When interpreting delegated legislation, the court's function is to determine the meaning of the words used. The Enabling Act is of the utmost importance in construing those words, but the primary focus must be on the words themselves." And, my lord, I say that at the least, it is clear that Section 67 may impose an obligation to adopt and that Regulation 25, which very clearly does so, assists in coming to the conclusion that it does impose an obligation to adopt.
This comes back to your submission, as you formulated at the beginning. You relied upon an answer to my lord's question upon Section 67 and/or Regulation 25. This is a different way of putting it. Regulation 25 lends support to Section 67, but if the contrivue be taken, that Section 67, read in the context of the whole Act, doesn't give rise to an obligation, you can't then use Regulation 25 to contradict. Is that a fair understanding?
Yes. Yes. But, as I say, no one, whether the appellant or anybody else, has suggested that Regulation 25 is ultra-viruses the Act or Section 67. And, my lord, well, I'll limit myself to that for the time being. Can I just deal with the meaning of Regulation 25? I say it's got a very clear meaning, that the authority must adopt within eight weeks of receipt of recommendations and reasons of the inspector, unless otherwise agreed by the Welsh Government. Can I just put away a couple of documents? Before I put them on? Yes, thank you very much. So, it means clearly that where the inspector recommends adoption, with or without modifications, the authority must adopt within eight weeks. The appellant's answer... One of the answers that the appellant gives, gave in his skeleton, was that, "Well, the inspector could make a recommendation other than adoption." But I say the recommendations referred to in Regulation 25 are clearly intended to be recommendations to adopt, with or without modifications. The appellant's point would make a nonsense of the provision. It's obvious that Regulation 25 was not intended to apply where there's no recommendation to adopt. By contrast, I say that the appellant's own interpretation of Regulation 25 is nonsense. The appellant suggests that what it means is that if the authority is to adopt, the decision must be made within eight weeks. No sensible reason has been suggested for that construction, despite, as I say in my skeleton at paragraph 51, my first raising this point in February of this year. If there's a discretion, if adoption is optional, why would a time limit be put on it? No good reason. Can I deal also with the other points made verbally today by my learned friend, Mr Parkinson? He referred to Regulation 25.1 and the words at the end of it, "unless otherwise agreed in writing by the Welsh Government", and said, "Well, that's not the sort of wording that one would expect to see if... For a release from an obligation." Why not? Those words are perfectly understandable and appropriate to use for a case where the Welsh Government agrees that they don't have to adopt. Secondly...
Adopt within that timescale?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what...
Yeah. I've already dealt with the next point I was going to deal with, because it's a point that my learned friend made in his skeleton. The next point I want to deal with is his point that the procedure in Part 6 governs not just adoption, but also revisions. And my learned friend took you to Regulation 25A. Just give me a moment, if you would, my lord. Yes, it's at your...
1031.
Yeah. Thank you. Page 82. The LPA, it says, "may adopt a revised LDP with revisions as originally prepared if the person appointed to carry out the independent examination under Section 64, subsection 4, so recommends." The LPA may adopt a revised LDP with modified revisions if the person appointed to carry out the independent examination under Section 64, 4, recommends. My lord, I say, so what? The wording used is different. Fine. But the cases are different. In 25, we're talking about adoption of a... First, as it were, adoption of an LDP. In 25A, we're talking about adoption of revisions. And what's interesting, surely, is the contrast between those provisions. The word "must" is used in 25, and it means what it says. And my lord, my learned friend's final point is, well, at least Regulation 25 can be read either way. But it can't. Because, as I say, there'd be absolutely no sense in a provision saying, "Well, you've got a discretion to adopt, but if you're gonna do it, you've got to do it in eight weeks." Can I come up with any good reason why that should be the case?
Can I take you back to his first point?
Yes.
What do you say the words at the end of subregulation, paragraph 1, Regulation 25, qualify? Unless otherwise agreed in writing by the National Assembly, what does that qualify?
Well, it qualifies the eight weeks.
That's your answer.
Yes. In other words, there's still an obligation to adopt, but what 25.1 is setting out is a time limit. And the Welsh Government can agree an extension.
You can have a time limit applying either to a duty or to a discretion, can't you?
Well, in theory. But I come back to my point. What would have been the point in applying a time limit to the exercise of a discretion?
Certainty.
Well, my lord, fine, but fro... Until adopted...
Thank you.
My lord, if I may say so, that doesn't actually... In the nice as possible, we can get there because... Pardon?
Fine but not fine.
Yes, fine but not fine. I'll go with that.
Thank you.
It doesn't get there because... Certainty, okay. But until adoption, as others have reminded me on a number of occasions during today, the Welsh Government, if it wishes to, can intervene. What is the point?
This is sort of lays down a framework which will govern how long the government's going to give the local authority to decide whether to adopt. And if it doesn't do it in eight weeks, then it will call it in.
Well, but it doesn't say that. It's... There is... So, fine but not fine. There is... There is no limitation in the Act or in the regs on the Welsh Government's ability to call it in at all. And so, no, it's not saying, "Well, if you don't adopt in eight weeks, we'll call it in", nor is it saying, "If you don't adopt within eight weeks, we may call it in", because its powers of calling in, as I've often been reminded during the course of today, are unlimited. So, you know, I come back to my point. What's the point of a time limit if it's a discretion? And the appellant's have had seven months to answer my question, and they've never come up with an answer. And so, I say very clearly, if I may, Regulation 25's meaning is crystal clear. And even if I'm wrong about Section 67's clear meaning of imposing an obligation, it's at the very least a situation where there may be an obligation. After all, we know from Benyon, paragraph 3.8, and Pelling versus Families Need Fathers... I can give the references to both, but I suspect you don't need them. That there can be an obligation to act even when the word may is used in legislation. But if there is any doubt about the meaning of section sixty seven, or, or, or that is resolved by taking into account regulation twenty five, which has a crystal clear meaning.
On the question of the purpose of the eight weeks, if a power, as, as you and others have pointed out, the adoption, followed by, I think, a notice of publication, triggers the tight time limit for section one one three challenges.
Yeah.
So where you, I mean, one of the things about litigation in this area is you can have challenges from a number of parties. It can be quite complex. So the, the eight weeks is helping the process to get to that point whereby if there is going to be any challenge, it's going to have to be brought quickly, in other words, get on with it.
Well, again, if I may say so, fine but not fine, because.
But that is, that is a purpose, that's an explanation, isn't it? Good or bad?
Well, it, it, it's a bad explanation, if I may say so, because are we really saying that? On, on, on my learned friend's argument and the one that your interpretation, you're putting to me for the sake of debate and discussion, after the end of eight weeks, the authority can't adopt. My learned friend's interpretation is, there's a discretion to adopt or not.
Well, I was, I was going to ask you about that because we often get this issue when legislation says X will be done within so many weeks. It then begs the question, what is the consequence, the legal consequence if it's not? And it doesn't necessarily mean that if you do something outside the eight weeks, it's ultra vires.
Well, my lord.
It could be procedural.
Well, in my submission, it, it, it does. I, I, I say, on my learned friend's interpretation and the one that you're putting to me for the sake of discussion, after, if it doesn't adopt in five weeks, in eight weeks, the local authority will be acting unlawfully. It loses, it loses the power to adopt after eight weeks. And I, I ask rhetorically, what on earth is the point of that?
There's a case called Brayhead, isn't there, in Ascot, which is all about the time limit for determining planning applications. And it's been decided in Scotland as well that a local authority does not lose the power to determine a planning application once the time limit for determining it has, has gone. It, it doesn't automatically follow that you're acting ultra vires just because you're outside a time limit.
Assume that's right for the moment, which I don't accept, but assume it's right for the moment, there's even less point in the eight week time limit if there's a discretion to adopt or not. I mean, what on earth is the point of it?
You say then it has no teeth?
Yeah. It's ridiculous. It's, it's an absurd, it's an absurd regulation.
Must means must.
Yeah, yeah, but, but.
Whereas may doesn't mean may.
Yeah, well. No, 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 no.
You don't need to respond to that.
So, so my lord, even on the Brayhead and Ascot point, I, I would say that makes my learned friend's interpretation even more unlikely to be the case. The, the, the right way to read this is it's an obligation and that helps with section sixty seven. Now, I, I, I know it's getting late. I, I want to deal, if I may, not at huge length, with a couple of points raised by my learned friend about the English provisions and about the O T O S question. And I'm happy to deal with them now or tomorrow, just as you wish.
How long, I want to take?
Oh. Twenty minutes?
No, I think we'll come to that in the morning.
Okay. Thank you very, thank you very much for your patience so far.
Not at all. Right, we will resume again then in the morning at ten thirty for the completion of your submissions, Mr Corner, and then yours, Selas, and reply if any to follow. There was one piece of homework, wasn't there, to be done?
It, it, it was a note, as, as I understood it, it was a note on whether there was a an obligation to adopt before the two thousand and four act. And I said, when I started, there wasn't. And if, if, we can put that in a note, of course.
An agreed note would be helpful. I think it would be helpful to, to see the legislation, the, the particular provision or provisions. It's not, not in great length, but.
And could I just return to the question of resolution? It would be helpful from my point of view to know if there, if resolution is determined art.
I don't think it's defined in the statute.
And, and is, well, is it defined in the local government statute?
I don't think so.
That, that's, that's a question. I mean, maybe I'll do that just very swiftly.
We'll, we'll think about it, yes. But, but, but I think the answer is no.
Very well. In that case, we shall start again at ten thirty. I remind everyone that these proceedings are being livestreamed and those who wish to avail themselves of that facility are of course most welcome to do so. I should have said that at the outset. But the proceedings have been livestreamed today and so they will be tomorrow. Thank you all very much. Ten thirty.